Hmm?
Okay, well, thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Seeing as it is 5:30, we'll go ahead and get started with the special meeting of the San Mateo City Council for today, June 6th. I would ask Madam Clerk to please read the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Juarez.
Here.
Councilmember Goltos is absent due to not feeling well. Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pappen is en route. Mayor Benia?
I'm here.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you very much. So, as we start the meeting, for anybody who has not been in attendance recently, we are back as with meetings in person, and so this is a hybrid meeting. If you're online, you can continue to do so if you wish to. If you would like to come in at any point and actually be part of the meeting and testify or give testimony in public with your public comments, you're welcome. So, we're here and we're excited. So, there are several ways for you to participate in this meeting though if you are remote. So, well, number one, if you're in person, okay, you can speak if you fill out one of the yellow public speaker slips and give it to the clerk, or you can sign in by using the iPad at the back of the council chamber, or you can scan the QR code to sign up, and the code is located on a sign at the back of the chamber. If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom, and you'll be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, press star six to unmute. And these options will be available for public comment until I close the public comment period for each specific item. So, tonight, this is a study session. There will be no voting tonight. Item number one is the new state housing law Senate Bill 9, and we have staff from the planning department here to present.
Thank you. Give me one second to share my screen, and can you all hear me as well?
Hi, Laura. Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. And can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Excellent. Good evening, councilmembers and members of the public. My name is Laura Richstone, and I am the associate planner with the community development department. In this study session, staff is seeking direction on what development standards should be included in the city's local SB 9 ordinance. A quick agenda before we dive into things. We'll start with a brief overview of SB 9, segue into a summary of the previous city council study session and community workshop to bring everyone up to speed, and then we'll move on to feedback on potential development standards to include in our draft ordinance. The presentation will then conclude with a timeline and next steps in the ordinance and court amendment process. Now, for a quick overview of SB 9. SB 9 was signed into law in September of last year and became effective on January 1st of this year. The main purpose of SB 9 is to increase housing production throughout the state by allowing additional units within single-family zoned areas. This bill allows for two units or duplex development in single-family zoned areas. It also allows for an urban lot split of an existing parcel into two new parcels in single-family zoned areas as well. Per state law, SB 9 projects are subject to ministerial approval only, meaning that no discretionary review nor public hearings can be held on these projects. Furthermore, SB 9 projects can only be denied if the building official makes written findings that the project would have specific adverse impacts to public health, safety, or the environment, and further finds that these impacts cannot be feasibly mitigated. As it stands now, SB 9 allows property owners to build up to four dwelling units on an existing parcel, or subdivide a parcel into two new lots and build two units on each lot. To be eligible for SB 9, a property must be zoned R1, single-family, and cannot be located in an historic district or be designated an historic property. The map to the left shows all three of the city's single-family zoned areas highlighted in yellow where SB 9 could apply. SB 9 projects also include additional restrictions around demolition of affordable units and tenant occupancy to prevent speculation, tenant displacement, and conversion of affordable units to market rate units. Projects that do not involve an urban lot split and that meet the development standards outlined in SB 9 are allowed up to four units per state law. This can include two main units, an ADU and a JADU. SB 9 established its own standards that supersede local development standards, and these standards include a minimum of four-foot rear and side yard setbacks for new development, a requirement that all units be restricted to residential uses only, and a prohibition of short-term rentals within SB 9 units. All of these standards are very similar to the state's ADU regulations as well. Per SB 9, the city can require up to one off-street parking space per primary unit. However, no parking can be required if a property is located within a half mile of El Camino or a Caltrain station. With an urban lot split, the city must allow a minimum of two units per lot. This would constitute a total of four units, two on each lot. Per SB 9, the city may be more permissive and allow up to four units per lot by allowing additional ADUs and/or JADUs. If recommended, this could result in up to eight units within the confines of the original parcel. Under SB 9, urban lot splits must result in parcels that are roughly equal in size with a maximum 60-40 size split differential. Each resulting parcel must be at least 1,200 square feet, and all new development is required to maintain a four-foot rear and side yard setback. Required parking for urban lot split projects is also the same as what is required for two-unit development projects, which we touched upon on the last slide. Per state law, certain actions are prohibited for urban lot split projects. These include prohibition on sequential lot splitting using SB 9, and a prohibition on short-term rentals within SB 9 units. Additionally, the city cannot require the correction of existing legal non-forgeries as a condition of project approval, nor impose an objective standard that would preclude the construction of a unit of at least 800 square feet in size. Additional lot split requirements include limiting all units to residential uses only, and a requirement that owners of an SB 9 lot split project sign an affidavit stating that they intend to occupy one of the housing units as their primary residence for at least three years after project approval. These standards were included in the state law to prevent large-scale lot splits by professional developers and speculation. The first city council study session on SB 9 was held on February 22nd of this year. At this meeting, staff requested high-level policy guidance and feedback in five main areas, where the state still allows some local discretion as seen to the right. At the study session, the council recommended that demolition limits be increased from 25% to 50%, which would allow more flexibility for property owners, and may increase the feasibility of building attached units. Other recommendations included providing courtesy informational public notices to neighbors' prior project approval, and not to increase the life of a subdivision map beyond existing allowable extensions at this time. Regarding policy areas four and five, the council requested more information from staff, which is why we're here today, along with additional information on how SB 9 duplex development compares to the city's R2 district, which is our duplex district, and how SB 9 is being implemented in surrounding jurisdictions, which we will get into. After the first city council study session, staff held a virtual community workshop on May 17th, allowing community members attended the workshop, where staff provided an overview of SB 9, and through polls gathered feedback on potential development standards. This feedback included allowing three to four units on urban lot split properties, allowing unit sizes in excess of 800 square feet, and not requiring onsite open space standards. As requested by council, staff researched how surrounding jurisdictions are implementing and handling SB 9. Of the eight jurisdictions researched by staff, which included Redwood City, Foster City, Berlin Game, and San Carlos, most jurisdictions have limited urban lot split properties to a maximum of two units per lot. Regarding lot size, most have deferred to the underlying zoning district to dictate unit sizes in excess of 800 square feet. However, some jurisdictions have limited all SB 9 units to 800 square feet regardless of lot size. Other standards imposed by surrounding jurisdictions include height restrictions or additional height restrictions for units located in rear yards, and different FAR standards to devise certain development patterns over others. And that brings us to why we are here tonight. Staff is requesting initial feedback and policy guidance in these three areas to guide us as we start to draft our own local SB 9 ordinance. Before I jump into the slide, I would like to highlight that non-urban lot split projects are allowed up to four units on each lot. This is allowed by right under state law, and the city has no discretion in this area. However, SB 9 projects that do involve a lot split, which is what we are talking about on this slide, are capped at an initial of two units per lot by state law. Per SB 9, jurisdictions may choose to allow up to four units per lot for urban lot splits if they so desire. The state recognized that building up to four units on smaller lots with reduced parking and setback standards allowed by SB 9 may not be appropriate for every jurisdiction, and built this flexibility into the law to be decided locally. Staff would like feedback on how many units per lot should be permitted on urban lot split properties. And to place this into context, the slide illustrates what maximum development would look like, both in terms of number of units and maximum floor area ratio for the average-sized lots found in the R1A, R1B, and R1C zoning districts. This graphic is taken directly from attachment nine of the staff report, and as you can see, development can become constrained on smaller-sized lots or parcels. Keeping that graphic in mind for context, should developments be limited to two units per lot, or increase to three or four for urban lot split properties? Or should we perhaps explore a tiered approach where potentially smaller lots would be limited to two units, while larger lots may be allowed three or four units depending on lot size? And then finally, if more than two units are recommended, what type of units are recommended in addition to a duplex? ADUs, JADUs, or both? Moving on to potential size limits for SB 9 units, and if this option should be explored as a development standard. Under SB 9, cities must allow a unit size of at least 800 square feet. Staff is seeking initial feedback on if unit size limits should be established for SB 9 units within the city. To this end, should SB 9 units be limited to 800 square feet, which is the minimum required by state law? Or should larger units be allowed? Parsing this down, should maybe one unit be limited to 800 square feet, while the other unit could be larger as determined by the underlying zoning district? Or alternatively, should FAR limits different from the underlying zoning district be established for SB 9 projects? Potential outcomes or effects of smaller unit sizes include potentially creating units more affordable to a wider range of income earners or first-time home buyers, if only because those units are smaller in size. Limiting the overall intensity of development in terms of square footage on the lot, and potentially preserving more open space on a parcel. Potential outcomes of allowing larger unit sizes include increasing the economic returns of projects for a property owner. Larger units may allow for more bedrooms and may provide housing for more families, and also larger units may also result in the reduction of usable open space on sites. Finally, staff is seeking feedback on if open space standards should be established for SB 9 projects. SB 9 does not require a minimum onsite usable open space. However, if the council desires, the city has the ability to establish some onsite open space standards for SB 9 properties, as long as those standards do not include a unit size of at least 800 square feet. Staff would like initial feedback on if we should explore the possibility of requiring onsite open space standards for SB 9 projects. Potential outcomes of requiring open space include preserving usable open space onsite for tenants and/or property owners to use, allowing increased passive onsite drainage and water circulation, and potential incentivization of attached versus detached units and two-story versus one-story development. Staff's goal tonight is to seek high-level policy feedback on potential development standards to provide us with a starting point as we begin to draft a local SB 9 ordinance. Staff would also like to note that there is always the option of moving forward with an ordinance that complies with the minimum standards per state law, and then revisiting the ordinance after a year or so to see how it functions and if it should be expanded. After tonight's meeting, staff will begin to prepare a draft ordinance with additional community outreach to follow later this summer. A third city council study session with the draft ordinance in hand will be held in the fall/winter of this year, and staff anticipates taking the official draft ordinance and court amendments to the planning commission and council late this year and early into next year. Thank you. This concludes my presentation. I am, of course, available for any questions you may have, and I will leave this presentation on this summary slide for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Laura. So, I'm going to ask council for questions. Who would like to go first? Please, go ahead.
Thank you for the presentation, Laura. I was wondering, in advance of our adoption of the ordinance, is there a default that we are appalled to in terms of the law being in effect and are not having an ordinance? I'm just curious in this interim, how we're treating SB 9?
Yes. In the interim, we're defaulting to the minimum required by state law. So, right now, we only have one SB 9 project in. So, we're defaulting to the minimum of two units per lot, and how we're treating it a little different is that, for that one at least, we are defaulting to the underlying zoning district to dictate maximum unit size, as opposed to capping a unit at 800 square feet at this time.
So, essentially, you're using FAR?
Yes, using the district FAR.
And did you say there's one application so far?
Yes, we have one application for a lot split in at this time.
Okay, thank you. And then, my other question is, when you are going through the comparison of R1 and R2, what was your kind of high-level takeaway in terms of now how they compare in terms of ease of the goal of developing housing?
I have a slide right here. So, I'm not sure if I can really touch upon ease of development, but I can, this slide does illustrate where the R2 is more strict as opposed to SB 9 duplex development. So, in terms of minimum lot size, R2 requires a greater lot size. In addition, R2 requires greater setbacks, both for ground and second floors, as opposed to SB 9 duplexes.
So, would it be, yeah, so I see the slide. So, would you say, in your professional opinion, that more restrictive requirements can be considered a deterrent to creating more housing?
It could be interpreted that way. I'm not sure if I would call our existing R2 restrictive, which is compared to the duplex development allowed in SB 9. It is more restrictive. Yeah, so there would have to be, if the council decides, some parity, potentially, going through the R2 and making it, you know, comparable to the SB 9 duplex.
And then, my last question is, have you seen this consideration in terms of R1 and R2 parity across other jurisdictions?
I haven't, I have not. We haven't looked into it that closely, but no. What we have seen is just kind of other jurisdictions just creating a whole new zoning, and just calling, you know, SB 9 development, we do that, as opposed to making their duplex comparable with the SB 9 standards.
So, let me understand. You're saying that in other jurisdictions, R1 and R2 are just kind of grouped together to create one uniform zoning code?
In other jurisdictions, they'll have the R1s, the R2s, and then they'll also have a new layer for SB 9 development. But maybe staff, maybe a colleague can speak to that more.
Yes, thank you, Laura. Through the mayor, good evening, councilmembers. Manira Sandeep, planning manager. I can speak to that question. So, what we've seen other jurisdictions do is apply the state minimum requirements for the most part to the R1 zoning district. While they do have R2 zoning districts, it doesn't appear that the SB 9 requirements have been extended to R2.
Okay, thanks. Those are my questions.
Excuse me, Manira. I'm sorry. I couldn't quite understand all that. Could you say that again?
Yes, so, most of the other jurisdictions have applied SB 9 to R1 zoning districts, which is the single-family zoning districts, and the other cities also have R2, like a duplex, two-family zoning district. However, the SB 9 provisions have not been extended to those other zones in these other jurisdictions.
Good, thanks. Eric, go please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question for one of the discussion topics that you were going to want to seek feedback on is the unit size or other size limits. And I'm just curious, so, when, if we were to say that there was going to be a limit of 800 square feet, that would be by right. But then, how could that look if, let's say, we wanted to have discretion and the council and Semitale voters to retain discretion above that? How, I know that one of the questions is, should you look into that? One of the questions I have is, could you just talk a little bit about how that might look and how that works, basically?
Yes, I can take a stab at that, and Laura will pull you in as needed. So, the state minimum requirement is to not preclude a second unit that's 800 square feet. However, the council has discretion to go above that, so the state has put a floor on this requirement if the council wants to explore a 1,000-square-foot unit or a 1,200-square-foot unit, because a unit can also mean more bedrooms and family-sized units. So, that's entirely up to the council. Something that other cities have also done is looked at the underlying zoning districts. So, for certain zones, if the maximum FAR is 6,000 square feet is allowed by right in that zone, then it's up to the applicant or the property owner to determine how they want to develop, how they want to split that amongst the units. And I know this is somewhat similar to the ADU provisions, and my understanding is we went above the minimum required under state law there as well, and then we also allowed for a discretionary process under the ADU provision. So, that's another option that if the council is interested, could be explored, where the 800 square foot could be the floor, and then anything above that could require a discretionary review at the staff level.
Great, thank you. That's all the questions.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Regarding the 25% demolition at exterior walls, and then I saw that there was a suggestion that we could go and allow up to 50%. Can you explain exactly what that means?
Sure. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Laura. You want to take that one?
Excuse me. State law has set a limit, a floor, stating that new development cannot result in more than 25% demolition of existing exterior walls. However, they also provided a provision that says local jurisdictions may increase this demolition limit above 25% if they so choose. So, in our last city council meeting, we ponied up that question to the council. Would you like to keep the demolition limits at 25% or potentially increase it to 50% or 100%? And majority feedback was, increase the demolition to 50%, which would be in line with our current standards and practices, and would also allow greater feasibility of building attached developments and developments that might work or situate better on property.
Okay, so, my concern is, an existing building where you're allowed to demolish a certain number of wall space, a percentage of wall space, has foundation under it, and so if the foundation is inconveniently located in the middle of the lot and blocking all other further construction, does this provision for allowing up to 50% of wall demolition allow for foundation demolition and changes also?
I believe it would, yes.
And if I may also add to that, Laura, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding of the 50% demolition is for the two-unit development, so not for the lot splits. For a lot split, the building code does not allow for property lines to be under homes, so those units would have to be modified to accommodate lot splits.
Okay, so then, we're allowing demolition and relocation of units then? Okay, good, thank you. The owner must occupy for up to three years. Is that required by the state?
Yes. It's a state requirement that the owner sign an affidavit that they intend to occupy one of the units for three years after project approval, or an urban lot split project.
And that's an affidavit as an intent to occupy?
Right.
Mayor Benia, we don't know how that would-
Oh, intent doesn't always work out.
Yes, that's what I wanted to clarify.
Okay. One last question. Could you go back, please, to your slide number nine, Laura, please?
There we go.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that I saw what was, what came out of that meeting. So, number three, open space requirements not supported by the majority of the 11 attendees.
Correct.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. That's all I need to see. Those are my questions for now. So, I think then we'll go on to public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
Mr. Mayor, I have one hand raised at this moment, and that is Ann Paulson. Go ahead and unmute yourself, and if there are any other speakers, please raise your hand now.
Okay.
Ann?
Okay, should I talk? Okay. Good evening, mayor and city council. My name's Ann Paulson. Thanks for letting me speak. A friend couldn't be here tonight, so she asked me to call in instead. We wanted to let you know something, and that is that the staff report says in the qualifying criteria, criteria number six, that SB 9 can't be used if it would involve the demolition of more than 25% of any exterior walls. And that is not correct. SB 9 prohibits demolishing a house if it has been occupied- It's in 65852 dot 21A5, and while there's a triple negative there, it's clear that a demolition can occur unless the unit was a rental. Um, I urge you to have your city attorney look at this, and I hope that you adjust the ordinance accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, the next speaker is Lori Watanuki.
Good evening, Mayor Bonilla, and members of the city council, my name is Lori Watanuki. Um, it's my understanding that you're looking at R1 neighborhoods at this point in time, and I hope that you will limit this to R1 neighborhoods. There are many small parcels in the central neighborhood, and the street parking is already very limited. Some parcels have very short driveways, which makes driveway parking prohibitive because the vehicles overhang into the sidewalks. This is very dangerous for the pedestrians because they have to walk into the street and get, to get around the cars. Their only choice is to park more vehicles on the street, there's high car ownership within the current R2 zoning, some residents have to block, to park blocks away, and this is difficult for mothers with children and for carrying their groceries, and for single women at night who have to park and walk the distance to their home. Most R2 zoning in the central neighborhood is out of the half-mile radius of the transit center, and it's more inconvenient to use Caltrain in the downtown. There is a duplex design guideline which helps to maintain the character of the craftsmen's Spanish colonial and Tudor revival homes under measure Y. And the state set SB 1 parameters for the R1 neighborhoods, not the R2 neighborhoods, and the neighboring cities also have limited SB 9 to R1-zoned areas. It's important to keep things simple and to not add more complexity to the mix. One of the biggest complaints of building a duplex or apartment in a neighborhood of single-family homes was the structure looked like a massive, large barn and took up the whole backyard, so the only way to get around visual impacts was to plant more trees so that they would not have to look at the massive structure next door or two doors down. Also, you lose the backyard space for the duplex, and the front yard ends up being used as, as the backyard for children. Backyards are very important for families with children, these are the key issues that need to be addressed with SB 9, new ADU guidelines and duplex design guidelines is to create open space standards. Um, there's been enough confusion with the general plan process over the last 18 months with the proposed new increases in densities and heights over measure Y. Why add more confusion to the R2 areas which are not part of the Area 4 reviews? So those are my concerns, and I'll send these concerns to you via email, and thank you for listening.
Uh, thank you, and Mr. Mayor, we have no other hands raised.
Great, thank you very much. So, back to the council, I have a further question. Um, since I've heard discussion about R2s more than once, um, and I understand other cities so far, in looking at the chart, and as you said, have not decided to allow any changes, uh, in R2 districts, but, uh, uh, when I think about this, it seems as though an R2 lot, which many are indeed actually, that I know of, close to R3 train stations, and, um, it seems as though they're put at a disadvantage with being only allowed to have the two units, even though some of them are on larger lots. Um, and if this law is, is actually intended to do what, what I actually favor, which is to increase density, then would the city have the discretion at some point, um, when discussing this to actually redesignate all or some of our R2 lots to have uses similar to what's allowed under SB 9?
Um, I'll, I'll take it, I can't see the room, so I don't know if Manera wants to take this, but, um, so regarding number of, of units in R2, um, R2, uh, can allow two to four units because ADUs are permitted within R2 districts, um, so, so, um, same amount of units could be on both SB 9 properties and R2 properties potentially, but yes, there is always the option for the city to, um, revise and revisit its R2 zoning districts and, um, change things as we see fit at a later time.
Okay, so the R2s, as I understand, are allowed to have ADU, so that would bring them up to four units, so it's an ADU, not NJADU and an ADU, but simply?
Potentially, yes, so, um, depending on the configuration of, uh, of, of a property and the current development, um, either one ADU or two ADUs may be permitted on an R2 property.
Okay.
And through the mayor, if I could add to that, the, the main distinction that appears to be between R1 and R2 under SB 9 is the lot split provision, because the R2 has a minimum lot size requirement of 5,000 square feet, but the R1 under SB 9, um, has a minimum lot size requirement of 1,200 square feet, or a 60/40 split, depending on the original size of the lot.
Right, so, which kind of goes back to what I said, many of the R2 lots are actually larger, and, um, uh, which brings to my mind what you just mentioned, which is if an R2 were allowed to split, do a lot split, then it could have potentially two R1 lots at an R2, if that were so done. Could that be done?
That would be something we would have to look into, that if that is the direction council gives us tonight, that, you know, we, if, if council wants us to explore what SB 9 could mean in the context of R2, we could certainly do that evaluation.
Okay, because right now, if the R1 does a lot split, you have two R1 lots, right?
Correct.
Okay, so if the R2 did a lot split, and we call that two R1 lots, then we're basically where we are under this SB 9, right?
Right, we wouldn't be rezoning the R2 lots, because that would be considered downzoning, and I believe there are other parts of state law that, that limit downzoning unless you upzone elsewhere, so, so that's, again, it's, it's, uh, it would just be two R2 lots.
It would be two R2 lots, each allowed to have a duplex or two duplexes on each one, right?
Yes, a duplex on each lot.
A duplex on each lot.
Yeah, so four units total.
Okay, good. That's, that's my question, okay, so, um, we're back to the council, we've had, uh, public comment, yes, go ahead.
There was one question from, from the public to clarify the 25% demo requirement and I, or, um, the 25% demo standard, um, and I just wanted to give you a chance to respond and clarify.
Um, Laura, do, would you like to take a stab at that, or?
Was, uh, what was the question, I'm just clarifying when 25% demolition is permitted or not?
Yes.
So, yes, um, so, um, per state law, um, there are, um, for lack of a better term, constraints per on new development for SB 9, and one of those constraints is a limit of demolition of exterior, um, walls, so the blanket limit under SB 9 is 25% for, um, alteration or demolition, um, and SB 9 allows cities to increase that, so, uh, per the direction of last city council, um, we are going in the direction of increasing that demolition limit to 50% of the structure's exterior walls at this time.
And I think there is also just understanding how that relates to the pro- provision of demolition for, um, for tenant, to rentals who rent and are occupying the unit, so I think, I think there's some confusion about how demolition, how demolition is treated in these two cases.
So SB 9 cannot be applied to units that have been occupied by a tenant within the last three years, whether that, uh, unit is affordable or not, um, if it has been occupied by a tenant within the last three years, then SB 9 cannot be used on that property or that unit. Um, so that's the tenant protection and displacement that's been built into the law. If a unit is on or occupied, for example, or has not been occupied within the last three years, then, um, the demolition limits would still apply, um, to the 50% as, uh, requested by city council.
Right, so, so just so the public understands the, the, the way that the, the law was drafted was to, was, it, with the intent of trying to, um, put some guardrails against, um, against displacement, right? So, so that's, that was the, the intent of, um, that restriction on demolition, but in the cases where demolition is, um, is allowable for, in the owner-occupied units, right, then, um, or vacant units, then, um, then we're, that's the, the very narrow can, like, consideration and component that we're discussing, yes?
I believe, I believe so, um-
Yes, that is correct, mm-hmm, so if the, the unit is occupied by a tenant, then the, for the, in, within the last three years, then the SB 9 does not apply to that, uh, property.
Got it, thanks.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Does that have to be, um, a contiguous three-year occupation, or is it just at any time during the previous three years there was a tenant? Do you know?
Um, my understanding would be at any time in the last three years, uh, because it is considered then a rental property that can be utilized, uh, by tenants, uh, but we would have to look for interpretation and seek for the guidance as we draft our ordinance.
Yes, just very briefly, the statute does not use the word continuously occupied, it just says occupied by a tenant in the last three years.
Okay. Okay.
Councilmember Rodriguez, no? Okay, good. So, do we have comments? Do we want to make, uh, comments and provide, uh, responses to the, uh, requested feedback here? Go ahead.
I'll just go down the, the list, so number one, urban lot splits, um, I, I think it would be wise to look at a tiered approach, and, um, and I, I personally think it's very reasonable to cap the number of, um, of you, total units at four, but I'm, I'm not attached to the number two per unit, I think that allowing some flexibility, given the, the specifics of a site, um, would, um, would achieve better results, um, and so that's, that's my feeling about number one. Number two, um, I strongly prefer F, deferring to FIR, I think that, um, that's been kind of the direction of the city code, and, uh, and I think it's just a kind of an easier, more flexible standard to work with. And, um, and then number three, I think if we, um, if we create a higher demolition standard, um, up to 50% in, um, that's consistent with, um, our ADUs, then I think that will actually achieve some of the goals of, of creating more open space by, in some ways, incentivizing or making the attached units more feasible. So I, I feel like we can, I, I care about open space, I want us to be, um, creating, um, design standards that will help us get more open space, and I think that that's one of the ways to, to consider doing that. Oh, and I'll just say that I, I also strongly, um, favor exploration of, um, creating a uniform code across R1 and R2s.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would just say, so I'll, I'll go down the list too, but before I begin, I just want to say that in general, my, my views on this are very similar to my views when we were discussing the ADUs. Um, I do not think that SB 9 is in the best interest of San Mateo residents, and I believe that in general, um, San Mateo residents are in the best, um, position to determine what's best for San Mateo and San Mateo residents. So that being said, um, I, I want to be looking to not go any further than SB 9 restricts us to. Um, when we were debating SB 9, there was a lot of give and take, and one of the things that was given, um, was, uh, setting some, some minimum standards that the cities must be required to adhere to, um, but then beyond that, there is discretion, and that's what we're talking about right now, um, how do we, um, do we give up, do we expand SB 9 and give up even more local control, or do we set in the proper limits that, that of course, um, apply the, the legal minimums we have to with SB 9, but then we retain as much local control as possible for future, um, for, for San Mateo residents and future councils when they vote on, on various projects? So, uh, number one, uh, lot splits, um, I do think, um, that we should definitely limit it to two. Um, if you look at all the jurisdictions, uh, neighboring jurisdictions, I think that's what they did, uh, and I think that that, um, is what we should do as well. Um, anything beyond that, um, I, I don't, I don't think would be a good idea, and I definitely do not think, uh, San Mateo voters would, uh, or San Mateo residents, I should say, would be in favor of that. So, moving right along to unit size or other size limits, um, I, I think that, I think that, that limiting to, um, eight, 800 square feet, um, for, for non-discretion, um, is, is the law, we have to do that, but if we go beyond that, I would like to do, um, something similar to what we did with the ADUs and have a staff discretion, because, um, every project is different, um, every, every, uh, lot is different, and I think that, um, it would not, it would be in our best interest to, to retain that, that control over it, but with, and not necessarily discourage it explicitly, but set the standards of what would need to happen in order for it to go over, um, 800 square feet. Um, let's see, alternatives, yeah, open space standards, um, similar, similar, uh, response, um, I would like to, to keep the minimum of what we would have for, for, uh, the demolition, but, but we could explore the, the possibilities on what we would, um, to go beyond that. And, and, um, the, it's not on here, but it entered the discussion for R2s, um, I actually agree with, uh, the caller, um, I believe Lori Watanuki, um, this, this SB 9 only focused on R1s, why would we want to recreate that for a different, uh, zoning district within San Mateo? That doesn't make sense to me, that would be, um, that'd be kind of giving up more local control, um, and expanding SB 9, so I would be against that. That's, those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Um, so I, um, as it relates to number of units, I, I would concur with leaving it at two at this moment in time, and let's see where we end up. Um, I too looked at every other jurisdiction, and they all stayed at two as, um, the minimum that's required by, uh, SB 9. So I'm with the, the two, as it relates to perhaps a slightly larger unit size, um, I agree that we've got our minimum of 800, if in fact there's going to be anything larger, I would like to see it be discretionary, but I do think that that's an area, if a lot is larger, it is an area, as you mentioned in your remarks, I think it was you, Manera, that said, um, it might be an opportunity for more bedrooms, which might be that missing middle, family housing that we're looking for, rather than on a larger lot, let's offer two or three or four units. I would prefer to keep it at the two units, but there may be an opportunity for something slightly larger, if the lot, if you will, can tolerate it, given how large it is, um, and that might be an opportunity for us to have some more bedrooms and some more family housing. So that's kind of my thought process, but I, I want to make sure I understand how it is that it, it works. Were you suggesting if there's anything over 800 square feet, and you are still below the FAR, it would be discretionary?
Um, I, I would just like to say that if, like, by right, it's 800 feet, but if it's gonna go above that, we start adding in additional, um, like, considerations on the by-project basis, like you said, like, lot size could be one of them, um, it could be, you know, whether or not, um, whether or not it's abutting a neighbor's house, you don't have set, setbacks, things like that, we were talking about with the ADUs, situational based.
Okay, good, I just want to make sure I understood that, and I would be on the same page with that, and I'm not sure I totally get the open space, it is- It is that you would like that to be a priority for us in the event there is a lot split? All right?
Not particularly. It was just going back to this graphic. When you do maximum development on very small parcels, it does get potentially very crowded. So, the question was, would we want open space standards to make sure that there would be open space on site if the council went in the direction of allowing, you know, three or four units per lot in a lot split scenario?
So, Laura, it doesn't really become an issue if, as I have indicated, my preference that it would be on the urban lot split, no more than the two units on either side, right?
It might become less of an issue with less units, correct?
Okay, got it. All right. So, do you need me to weigh in still, or?
Yes, just to be... Oops. Yes, please weigh in. Just.
Okay. Come back to me on that. Thank you. Sorry about that. Okay.
That's okay. My thoughts on number one. I really see and understand the reason for the existence of SB9, which is to allow us to increase density in those parts of the city where otherwise, it would not happen because of the underlying zoning. That's because of our historic housing shortage, which has caused prices to soar, especially here where we live on this peninsula, and created a housing shortage and increase in rents, because rents tend to follow the cost of housing as established by the cost of a home. Not to mention, everything else here is extremely high-priced. So, the idea of creating additional density is important so that we have housing stock available, which will reduce the demand and hopefully cause some kind of a regulation, some kind of stabilization of housing costs. That's what I think the goal is. And so, in that interest, I am interested in increasing the density and in allowing more development rather than less. I really would favor that the urban lot split should be allowed, that each main dwelling should be allowed to have both an ADU and a JADU. On number two, I really don't see, it seems punitive, to put in place an 800-square-foot limit. I really think it punishes people who own property that happens to be of a smaller size. It diminishes the possibility that they have for being able to create housing, not only for their family, but also for other people that need it. The whole reason we're here talking about this is because we need housing. So, I think we should allow a larger unit size, and it should be dictated by the underlying zoning. In terms of open space standards, I mean, the underlying zoning includes an FAR, is that correct? Okay. So, as long as we're using the FAR, then what I would say is we don't need to establish any other open space standards, but we need to be sure that we require that whatever paving there is, is permeable, because we need our water to penetrate the earth. So, those are my thoughts on that. Now, I asked a lot of questions about R2s earlier, because I see that as a great area of opportunity. And like I said, if you look at the radius maps around our train stations, there are quite a few R2s within those zones. I mean, I live within a half-block of the train line itself, but I'm close to the Hayward Park Station. And very close to me, all along B Street, there are just a ton of duplexes and apartment buildings. And, but the duplexes, I think, and they're on good-sized lots. And I would like to see those areas be able to provide more housing. And they're not the only areas like that. Those are just the ones that are close to me. So, I'm interested in exploring what other opportunity could be available to owners of R2s. And if that means the possibility that R2s could be allowed to split and become two R2s, then I think, and each one could have a duplex, I think that's a good alternative. So, those are my thoughts on that. Any other thoughts, anybody?
How does that jive with what we're doing in the general plan? And zoning in the general plan, when we're talking about changing R2s? Is that something where we should be doing that there? I'm not, this is not a yay or a nay. I just don't know procedurally why this is coming up now. And isn't that a part of what we're doing in the general plan?
The intensification, as part of the general plan update, is focused on the 10 study areas. So, predominantly, R2s are not within the study areas.
He just described areas where they are. I know those areas. That's in our study areas.
All single-family is outside the study areas. There may be some R2 in the study areas, depending on their location. But this would be a separate exercise focused on just what is applicable under SB9. But we are looking...
SB9, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
We are looking at an updated land use map that would address all areas of the city. But the growth would be focused in and around the study, or within the study areas.
That's what I thought, yeah. Okay. And SB9 is only, we're only dealing with R1s on SB9. Correct? That's what SB9 mandates you, look at your R1s?
Yes, it focuses on single-family. So, it would be at the city's discretion if we wanted to expand that.
Okay, thank you. So, have we provided all the input that's required here? Oh, we have one more.
Can I just ask council colleagues to clarify? Because I think we're all talking about a maximum of four units total on one original-sized lot. And so, I'm, the question of limiting, limiting the number of units to two lots per urban lot, two units per urban lot split, that would prevent, for example, having a primary structure that's untouched, an original structure, and then having a split in, say, the back that would have a primary dwelling unit, an ADU, and then a JADU. So, even, so that could have a total of four units and, but also have more than two units per lot. And so, that's kind of a, that's maybe, maybe not, you know, a huge demand, but it does allow for some flexibility and still puts a cap at total four units per original lot. And so, I'm just curious, given that scenario, is, do you still feel strongly about having a maximum of two units per lot?
We just went from one to four, right? We just went to one to four, right? That's what SB1, SB9 requires, correct? When you do an urban lot split?
We went from one to four with the urban lot split. On a regular lot that's not subject to the urban lot split, you're allowed a duplex, so two units plus an ADU and a JADU.
And that gets you a four also.
Correct.
Right.
Although I asked for more.
And I just, no one is disputing there's a housing shortage. I don't, you know, we all come to this with that tremendous understanding that there's a housing shortage. This is a change to R1 neighborhoods, and we recognize that. They've been R1 neighborhoods for a long time. And the state has looked upon those as an area where we can have additional housing. That's the law, and that's what we're going to work with. But I just don't feel that if you haven't gone higher on the urban lot split than the two units per new lot, I don't feel you're ignoring the housing shortage. I think you're really trying to work with that housing shortage. And so, that's kind of where I'm coming from on it. I did notice Millbrae did something where they would allow more if that extra one was going to be affordable housing. That wasn't touched on in the presentation, although I did see it in the materials that were provided. But I think going from one to four, and let's see where we are. Let's give it a shot and see what happens. I mean, that's what I really think. But I don't think taking this, hey, we want two on each lot, is somehow, you're not aware of the housing shortage. I mean, and in my perspective, like I said, I would look at more than 800 square feet and vement we could get family housing, not studio housing, not a one-bedroom at 800 square feet. And that's an area that we can all concur needs some addressing. So, I just, it is not, I'm taking, I'm not taking this position because I don't know that there's a housing shortage. Of course, there's a housing shortage. And we're doing the best that we can on this particular issue. We are also doing our general plan. We're also doing our housing element, where we've identified for the next few Rena cycles upwards of 11,000 lots where there can be new housing. So, it's a holistic approach, and this is just but one aspect of it.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I don't think that I imply that anybody was not aware. I simply pointed out that there is a housing shortage. Thank you very much. Have we had everything we need to hear?
Through the mayor. I do think we need to make sure that we're clear for staff to go forward to bring this back about item number one.
I don't think your microphone is on.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's working. I'm going to borrow yours. Okay. Can you hear me now? Okay, sorry about that. So, I think for the first item, particularly the urban lot split, in order for staff to come back with the next round of this, we need to be clear. And I'm not sure I'm clear, at least, on whether we're going to go one to four, which is what is allowable under current law, or if we're going further than that. I heard two definitive one to four with Councilmember Rodriguez and Deputy Mayor Papin. I'm not sure Councilmember Lee, where you are on that. And if we end up with sort of a two to two, we will continue to proceed at the state law level, which is one to four.
So, let me clarify. I understood us all to be aligned on the one to four. What I was saying is that if we have a total of four units allowable, if there is a lot split, and it makes more sense to add three additional units to the secondary lot, I would like that possibility. But I'm not, I'm not sure if that could be designed in that way.
So, that would go one to five?
No, it would go one to four. So, one and three.
Excuse me. Okay. I see what you're saying.
So, I'm saying for people who have a strong sentimental attachment to their original structure but are interested in being part of the housing production opportunity and want to create three, you know, joined units in a back lot where that's feasible, I'm asking if council is interested in allowing that level of flexibility and if the ordinance can be drafted in that way.
If I can comment on that? Mike, through the mayor? I'm not for this, and this is the reason why. Because, one, I wasn't for SB9, and I don't think that's good for San Mateo. But if you allow even more flexibility, and let's say your neighbor is going to take advantage of this, and then you live, you happen to live next to the three-side of the one, you know, that's going to, that's going to take away your sunlight. It's going to, it's going to maybe add parking issues to your side. So, I don't see why we should add that flexibility. So, that's why I'm not for that.
I don't think, I don't think things got any simpler.
Through the mayor, if I could speak to that. I will have to look closely at the state law. But my understanding was that once you do the urban lot split, you have the right to develop a duplex on each of those splits. We, I can discuss further with our city attorney to see if there's more flexibility should the council want to go in that direction. But my understanding is that it does allow for the development of two units on each lot, not three on one and one on the other.
If I may, through the mayor. So...
Yes, please.
Where you have an urban lot split, I think the idea is that you now have the two lots. And on each of those lots, you could have a duplex, right? You could, you could have, well, you could have two units in various combinations. So, that's what we must allow for. So, the question is, for each of those two new lots, do you want to go beyond the two units? Do you want to go have three, or do you want to have four? That's the question.
Okay. If that's, if those are the parameters, then I, then I would agree that we can limit to two.
Not fair.
I think we have what we need at this point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then we can move on to the next item. Thank you very much. Item number two tonight is a closed session. And that means that we're going to ask for public comment. Prasanna Rosai, do you want to speak about the closed session at all?
Not at this time, but certainly the public is welcome to provide any comment that they wish.
So, we're going to adjourn to a closed session. And this is the time for any public comment that we may have on this closed session period. Any public commenters?
If you would like to make a public comment on the upcoming closed session item, please raise your hand. Mr. Mayor, I have no hands raised.
Okay, then we will adjourn to closed session. We will be returning for the regular meeting at 7:00 PM.
We're in conference room B.